Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community this past week. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. McGough?
Here.
Mr. McGough? Here. Spence with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A tax assessors' results reports for hearing dates held October 1st, 2nd, 8th, and 15th, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3B minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority held September 2nd, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3C minutes of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority regular board meeting held September 18, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3D minutes of the composite pension board meeting held September 24, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3E minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held September 24, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3F audit status report from Robert Rossi and Company received October 23, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3G comprehensive plan evaluation report from Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission received October 17, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed. Any announcements from members of council?
I just have one. I mentioned this last week, but I'm just going to mention it again because I think it'll be helpful. Received the call from DPW Director Gallagher last week. The DPW has a good amount of grass seed that was given to them. If any organizations such as soccer, baseball, or football leagues would need or could use it for their fields, please give Tom Lynch a call at 348-4165. Thank you.
Anyone else? Couple of announcements that we, for council. First of all, next week's council meeting is scheduled for back at City Hall. We are hoping that the repairs and inspection of the elevator are completed by then. Tomorrow, October 30th, 10:00 a.m., the groundbreaking for Goodwill at the old or former North Scranton Junior High School, long awaited by many people and a good project to begin. Also, reminder that this Saturday is daylight saving time. Turn clocks back one hour and change batteries and smoke alarms, which is recommended by many. Tuesday is Election Day. Please, reminder to all citizens to go out and exercise your right and, as far as I'm concerned, your responsibility to vote in this election. And last thing, on next week's agenda, or next week, there will be a public hearing regarding the SAPA legislation that will be reintroduced in Seventh Order. And anyone wishing to comment or any support or not for the SAPA plan, please, there will be a public hearing at 5:30 next Thursday. And I believe that was all of the announcements.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
I believe Mr. Elman was first on the list.
Our friends, ex-friends, and people in the middle. You know, in my opinion, the past eight years of my young life, I've suffered through the worst president this country ever had that I've lived under, the worst governor, two people put in jail for the county, and the worst mayor since the founding of the city. That's a lot for one person now. I talked to so many people feel this administration's just going nowhere, absolutely nowhere. Yesterday, let me just get off the subject. Yesterday, I went to tourist club about 2:00 o'clock. They put me out the door at 7:30, so I was there a good while. And I probably talked to eight or 10 people. You know, every time I went to the bathroom, we'd talk about it. Most of them that I talked to don't live in town. Some had property here. I'm not talking about the people that I talked to at the grocery store. I'm talking about some professional people, you know, and so forth. They just don't see anything good going on. Everybody thinks you need to restructure these loans instead of worrying about credit and borrowing more. It's just going to fall on children and grandchildren. Last week, well, a couple of weeks ago, Marywood took another piece of property out of Washington, $150,000. How are we going to cover it? Just raise taxes, that's all. You know, that's all that's been. This very host, this building, our very host, last month took $4 million off. You know, what are we going to do? Just raise more taxes? Something got to be done. Mr. Miller proposed a little program. Nobody had any interest in it. I asked why we can't have a zone, and Mr. Hughes looked into it and said it might have some possibility. No one ever went any further. You people just keep falling back on the fact that you can raise taxes, and that's obscene. You just can't do it. I don't know if anybody saw it or was interested. King's College bought a piece of property, $125,000. Guess what? They agreed to pay taxes for 10 years. Here it is right here. Why couldn't your Messiah, Armoso, think of something like that for the city instead of just telling everybody to raise taxes and sell everything we have? He's just such a... Who's paying him anyway? Why is he still hanging around here, wasting everybody's money and time? He hadn't come up with one positive thing since the day he hit the city. You know, he doesn't live here. He doesn't have no property here. He doesn't know the people, the city. That's why people don't want to live here because of things that he thinks we ought to be doing instead of helping people save their homes. I just, you know, it's just so... The city is just going downhill, and you people don't just acknowledge what's going on under your noses. This man just, I just don't see where he has any right whatsoever to tell 72,000 people what he wants. He's dictating to you, and he's just not the kind of person, the caliber of leadership that we need at this time. And before I go, I'd like to say something. I couldn't believe what I heard. Some piece of filth shot up Obama Bear and three cubs needlessly, like at the airport. And they have a continual history of doing such. And our game commission is just worthless. And they've been worthless for years and years because I keep up with all this real good. They don't make any attempt to do anything, but this was an atrocity. If I get up in the morning early enough to do my chores, I'm going to go to the airport meeting they're having at 10:00 o'clock or 10:30. But this is most objectable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Joan Hoda Wannitz, Scranton. With regard to item 3F, the audit status report from Robert Rossi dated October 23rd, there's been actual progress. Instead of 24 items outstanding, there are now 23, which is progress over the last two months, keeping in mind that the audit was due on May 31st, and at this rate, it won't even be done in 2015. Or, on the other hand, it might, we might see a flood of information come in, and we'll get an audit, and then I personally would question validity of the information if everything just suddenly pours out. One of the items that's still outstanding, by the way, is the audit of financial statements of the Scranton Parking Authority. And you proved that $4 million note last week, and you have no idea what their books look like. And we still have no idea what their books look like. I'll be interested in seeing those lines in the budget pertaining to the Scranton Parking Authority. By the way, the budget is due in 17 days, and I don't think there will be an audit to support that budget. It'd also be interesting to see how you all word, request for a proposal for 2014 audit when you have no 2013 audit and no clear concept of when it will be coming in. But that's somebody else's headache, not mine. I have a question. If the governor does not sign the Act 47 legislation, does it automatically become law after a certain number of days? Does anyone know?
I think after, I'm not positive, but I think after 10 days.
10 days? That would be November 2nd, wouldn't it?
I'm almost positive.
Okay. Unless he, of course, vetoes it, correct? Okay, well, I hope he doesn't veto it, even though it's just before the election, because I think the city needs a sense of urgency on its distressed status. I really do. I hope we don't go another eight years in distressed status. I hope that it's resolved one way or the other, even if resolution means going into receivership. I don't think you can continue down this path indefinitely. 22 years is much too long. Has there been any information on the city's negotiation with the unions versus on the topic of pensions and concessions for pensions? Any information? Is that in progress?
Yes.
Negotiations?
Yes. We, I have received a letter from the Fraternal Order of Police, and I'll address it during motions.
Okay, appreciate that. I'm glad to see something's going on, and I'm happy to see the groundbreaking tomorrow morning for the Goodwill project. I will be there. I hope many other people show up. Does anybody have an idea of, once that groundbreaking occurs, what the timeline should be before that becomes, you know, a functional entity? Anybody? Is it like distressed status? We're working on it? The audit, we're working on it?
I'll ask that question tomorrow. I'll ask that question tomorrow morning at the groundbreaking.
Okay, I'll be listening there. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening. Dave Dobson, President of Scranton. Taxes and fees paid. Now, last week, we got into some rather heated comments about the parking authority and the default of Landmark loan. And I would like to point out once again that it resembled the Keefe Opera Commission with Frank Costello and Lucky Luciano and whomever else. You know, I pay my taxes. What did you do for your country? I pay my taxes. So what if I squeezed them out of the working class? But I'd also like to remind that $50 million were spent thanks to the parking authority. They acted like a prodigal son and guaranteed and agreed that as long as the litigation with Landmark continued, it will be a negative mark on Scranton. So whether or not we're right or wrong, we kind of, we might be stuck paying, and that's all there is to it. But back when these parking garages were initially in the planning stage, for instance, at the Connel Building, a neighborhood activist walked up through the old parking garage and said there wasn't a crack in the concrete or anything. He was told to stay the hell out of there, or he would be arrested for trespassing. So, you know, we put up a nice new one, and naturally, nobody's parking there anyway. On state tax exempt laws in the Constitution, there's two dozen cities that are in the same boat, at least two dozen cities. It's probably more like 30. And I'd like to see us form a group, a class action group, and go after the state to compensate cities for their required tax exempt. After a certain threshold, it's beyond comprehension that we could ever pay our bills with a third of our property tax missing and then drawing on city services on top of it. And on the sewer authority, I'd like to bring that up again. Corporations rarely, when they misconduct themselves, does anyone ever wind up in prison? The only reason Bernie Madoff wound up in prison was because he kept his family out of it, who probably didn't know what was going on. And in the 90s, I don't, I'm not sure of the years. I remember the name of the person that went to jail for the lower Lackawanna, for cooking, sewer authority for cooking the books. And he was released an epilent that was poorly treated or whatever and caused a problem, and he got caught. And I think there was a one-year jail sentence. So it's something to consider if you ever think that handing, handing over the sewer authority to a corporation is a good idea, because they won't wind up in jail. We'll wind up with a fine, like we did the last time. And it was considerable. It was $2 million initially, and they fought off and extended the compliance for another 15 years. They wanted it in 10 years or something like that. We have 25, so it's only a couple million dollars a year, and it's not really attached to city taxes. We need to collect our back trash fees and whatever else is owed. It's like I said, I think people were red flagged in the past. Don't bother. Do not disturb this person. And it's not right to keep raising up someone else's fees so that somebody with five times the money can get by cheaply. And it's time to bring back the golden parrot. I'll make it fast. I'm not even out of time. How about that? Al Bosco owes all kinds of money around town. He donated 150 grand to Governor Corporate Bear. It's like you can't keep them all afloat, but he can donate 150 grand to politics. I hope he gets 15 or 20 million back, and then it'll be a good investment for Mr. Al. And the Times editorial page for Mr. Court write, every week, every week, there's something in there depicting him as some kind of wacko or fiend or whatever, and they should really be ashamed of themselves. Why don't they pick on all the people from outside the area that donate to the mayor's race? Thank you and have a good night. Maybe they deserve to pay a few commuter taxes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to start off going back to last week because I'm not sure what you voted on. Going back to the prior week, the 16th of September, there were several exchanges between Mr. McGough and people who came to the podium regarding that loan approval. And Mr. McGough, you said in one, "There is no loan agreement as of yet." The citizen said, "You have no idea what kind of percentage." Mr. McGough, "There is no loan agreement yet, so we don't know. What we are voting on is to give approval for them to negotiate that loan." Mr. McGough, this is a second one. "Mr. McGough, there is no loan. All we are doing is setting the parameters in which the loan can be negotiated." Citizen, "I understand that, but sooner or later, the loan is going to be negotiated, and there's going to be a loan, correct? Is that what this is all about?" Mr. McGough, "Yes, that's the purpose, but there is no loan agreement at this time." Then, then there was another, Mr. McGough said, well, well, I'm sorry. The citizen then replied, "Then why are we voting on it? You know, I mean, seriously." Mr. McGough said, "We are not voting on a loan." And then there was something else said, and Mr. McGough again said, "Well, ask it when the actual loan agreement negotiations are complete." "Well, then it will be too late," said the citizen. And Mr. McGough said, "No, it's not too late." Mr. Jackowitz, happened to be the citizen, he said, "Yes, it is." And Mr. McGough said, "That's when we vote on it." Now, that implied that there was going to be separate legislation to approve the loan. But if I'm not mistaken, you guys sort of slipped the actual loan in as well, but on the other side of that is the terms that were for that loan had a very small window. I believe it was from the end of October to the end of November, which means the loan would go into effect the 1st of December, and that required five months of payments upfront. And the Home Will Charter says the payment of funds, city funds, shall not be made unless specifically provided for in the budget, which these funds weren't, and specifically authorized by the controller. And there was nothing from the controller to state that she had the approval, that you had her approval to go ahead with spending five months' worth of loan payments in the month of December. So what did you approve last week? And should that not have been separate legislation, a whole separate ordinance? Because it was stated, and people believed that it was going to be separate, that you were only authorizing the investigation, and then all of a sudden, at the last minute, when not everybody who had spoken before even knew that it was being voted on. So why was that not separate legislation to the approval of the actual loan, and why don't we have the supporting documentations?
We received the term sheet last Thursday. The terms were within the parameters of what we had voted on before, and yes, we voted on that term sheet for that loan. As far as the payments, as far as I, I remember, I don't have it in front of me, the first payments on that are not due until the first quarter of 2015, I believe, March of 2015.
Even those first five months? I thought you, I thought it said you had to do upfront. This is the upfront, the five-month payment?
I said, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
It was my understanding, my understanding that the amortization, I can never say that word for some reason.
I know, it's toughy. It's a tongue twister.
That it was, the first payment was March of 2015 after the first collection of the meter revenues.
Okay. I'll check that out and be back next week. But I, it just seems to me that should have been two separate pieces of legislation. But on to something else, which is the, it's been a month now, almost a month, since the deadline for paying the trash bill was negotiated. Do we have, was Mr. Wexler's idea to bill those who had only made one payment or had made no payment followed through? I did, I write to know, and I know there are thousands of people who have not paid. So I'm wondering, and I'm wondering if Mr. Evans has the exact numbers of how many paid and how many didn't pay.
Not at this point, but I'll try to get them for next week. I know right now that Treasurer Beck is in the process of determining homes that may have had multiple billings but don't have those apartments rented. So right now, those people are coming in and proving with their electrical bills that they did not have apartments rented, so they do not have to pay the additional fee. So if someone had, didn't rent the apartment for a year, they don't have to pay the extra tax. So I know right now that that process is still going on, and that's why there was some reluctance into mailing out those deficient bills again.
Okay, but you don't have the breakdown on how many are questioned and...
No, because it won't, it won't be, that information they have to supply until the end of October.
Okay. As usual, I have other things, but good Lord willing, I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler?
Thank you, Mr. McGough. Just a few things this evening. It's kind of been a quiet week. In terms to the legislation about the fees for the Showmobile, during the summer, I spoke to a couple of different people who were interested in renting the Showmobile for some, for some activities, and unfortunately, our Showmobile was in for repair. So I'm very happy to see that this legislation is coming through to increase the fees, because this Showmobile is an item that the city can make some money off of. It is a fine thing to have. I think it also provides an opportunity for some sponsorships, and when it's used around the city or even outside the city, I think it'd be good for our publicity and good for our reputation if someone could see that we are able to make some money off of this. The other item that I have is that the city will be opening bids on November 19th for repair of the roof and roof deck replacement on Engine 10 Fire Station up on East Mountain. I applaud the administration for their commitment to keep this building in a state of repair. It is a valuable asset to our neighborhood, and we're happy to have it open. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just one very brief item. Some residents from the Sandy Banks community contacted me, this going back about a month or two ago, regarding a possible zoning change in their area of town. There was, there were some, there was some industry in the area that has since moved out, and they are seeking to have a change from light industrial to residential in their area. And they did drop off a petition for all of city council. So I would like to make a motion to ask the City Planning Commission to review the request of the residents of the Sandy Bank area regarding this zoning change.
Mr. R. Second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Thank you, Vettisall.
Mr. Evans?
First off, I think this may be our last meeting at Lackawanna College, so I'd like to personally thank the multi-talented Jim Cullen and his crew for all they've done for us here. They've done a great job. It's been very, very comfortable here, and it worked out well, and props to them, and thank you very, very much. On pension reform, recent historical review of the city of Scranton pension funds, as prepared for the pension funds composite boarding completed by the Brer Barber Company disclosed the following findings. This is from their summary of issues. It states, these are just three of the six summary of issue statements. "The court settlement on the fire and police pay issues led to increased pension benefit payouts that already exceeded contribution levels. A significant number of disability retirements have seriously eroded funding, and finally, plans are not actuarially sound and may be headed toward insolvency, as recently noted by the Audit General." So as you can see, it's simply more confirmation of the seriousness of this issue. I've spoken to many active... There's no one going to ride on a white horse to save the day. We are left with only real and comprehensive pension reform. That's the hard part, and we need to get to work on it ASAP. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Kaiser Avenue is undergoing repaving from Ferdinand Street to North South Road. The project began October 19th and is expected to be completed by Friday, this Friday, according to PennDOT representatives. Last week, I mentioned that residents in the Bull's Head section requested additional crime watch signs be put up in their neighborhood. Chief Graziano responded that there are a few signs left, and they will be put up in that area. I am extremely concerned with blight in our neighborhoods, as are all of my colleagues on council. It's been the number-one complaint that I've received since being elected to this office. I feel it's crucial that we address the urgent need to reverse blight and rebuild our neighborhoods. One of the ways the city can address this need is to seriously explore the possibility of creating a land bank. And I'd like to take a moment to explain what a land bank is. Land banks are governmental or nonprofit entities that acquire, hold, and manage foreclosed or abandoned properties. The concept of a land bank is to acquire and purchase vacant and underutilized property with the future goal of productive reuse of the land. Land banks acquire properties through tax foreclosure, intergovernmental transfers, nonprofit transfers, and open-market purchases. Land banks are typically governed by a board of directors that adhere to bylaws and articles of incorporation specifically tailored to meet the need of individual communities. Land banks have proven to be an effective tool for stabilizing communities burdened by a large number of vacant, abandoned, or foreclosed properties, as is the case here in the city of Scranton. Most local governments find, as is the case in Scranton, that they have a limited capacity and resources to deal with the intricacies of these mounting challenges on their own. They simply cannot deal with adequately maintaining and securing properties until new owners can be found, delivering clear title, erasing unpaid property taxes, or navigating the often cumbersome processes for transferring government land to private owners who will return them to productive use. Across the country, land banks have become an effective tool to address these challenges, reversing the cycle of decline and decay, facilitating the transfer of vacant property, and promoting economic development and neighborhood stabilization. More than 80 local governments in 23 states have created land banks or other entities with similar powers to turn the liability of vacant properties into community assets. In January of 2013, the Pennsylvania State Legislature passed land bank-enabling legislation, giving municipalities like Scranton a new tool to fight blight. As we are aware in the city, vacant, abandoned, and tax-delinquent properties impose significant costs on neighborhoods by lowering property values, decreasing tax revenues, and undermining community cohesion, which is very important. Land banks allow local governments to overcome barriers that inhibit the redevelopment of these properties. It makes it easier for developers, nonprofits, and individuals to acquire vacant publicly-owned land. For example, the disposition of tax-delinquent properties can be challenging when delinquent taxes exceed the property's market value or when there is no clear title to that property. The affordable housing stock also benefits from land banks. In the event that vacant lots cannot be developed due to a lot's irregular shape or small size, land banks can assemble adjoining parcels to create a larger, more marketable property. This would be particularly helpful for many properties throughout our neighborhoods in the city. The land bank can also operate side-lot programs, which I think is very important. Ownership of vacant lots is transferred to adjacent property owners for a nominal fee. This ensures abandoned properties are back on the tax rolls. It increases revenue and reduces maintenance costs. The side-lot program also allows for community gardens that will beautify neighborhoods throughout the city. This past month, I have met with members of the city administration, county officials, and state officials about the possibility of creating a land bank authority in Scranton or a regional land bank authority in conjunction with Lackawanna County. These conversations have been held previously, and I am making an aggressive effort to continue them so that we can bring all the key stakeholders in the area together and begin to use this tool to address vacancy, blight, and property tax delinquency. I will update my colleagues on council as I progress, and I have asked Mr. Evans, Councilman Evans, who has a great background in real estate, to help me in this cause, and hopefully we will have something concrete by the new year. And that is all I have this year, or this meeting. Thank you.
This year?
This year, no.
Thank you for taking a vacation.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Sure.
I am absolutely in full support of this. As the President of the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors and also as a Board of Directors for the Pennsylvania Association of Realtors, we have been instrumental in pushing this through the state legislature. We have been in support of land banks for many, many years, and finally saw this come to fruition. So I think it's a valuable, valuable tool in the fight against blight, and this along with our new quality-of-life ordinance, which we hope to get online soon, will go a long way. But this is a long-term play and a very, very important initiative, so thank you very much for taking that up.
Yeah, and just one more comment. I would like to say, thank Councilman Evans for helping me out with this, and this is going to be our mission to get this off of the ground. And I know that the Courtrite administration supports this, the county supports it, it's just going to be about getting all the key stakeholders together, making sure the conversation does not die out, and getting this process started. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, I'd like to just point out that, as you've heard from council members this evening, we are working on a number of projects individually and collectively that we hope will address some of the issues of the city of Scranton. As a council and as five members, there are limited things that we can do, simply by numbers, but be assured that we are aware of the problems that exist in the city and are doing our best to address those problems. And I thank all of my members of council for the individual efforts that they have made to address some of these issues. Just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, I forgot earlier to mention that because of Election Day, there will be no garbage pickup on Tuesday, November 4th, which means that the collections for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday will be delayed, just so that you don't put things out early and it becomes problematic. I did receive a letter from a resident concerning some animal control issues, and I just want to make the resident know, or make it known, that these issues will be brought up with the animal control officer, and hopefully we can arrive at some resolution for the problem that exists. As far as some of the, one of the questions that was asked earlier, we have received a correspondence from the Fraternal Order of Police, President Paul Hellring, a letter addressed to the council president. It says, "It has come to my attention that city council is looking for an update on contract negotiations between the city and the FOP. Over the past several weeks, the FOP has met with the city several times and has future meetings scheduled. The meetings are positive, and both sides have presented cost-saving measures for the betterment of the city and its taxpayers. I ask that the council be patient and realize that this is a lengthy process to be done efficiently. The membership of the FOP realizes the city is facing tough financial times, and being stakeholders as employees and taxpayers of this community, we only have good intentions towards the city and its residents. Currently, we have a contract set to expire December 13, or December 31st, 2017. Our willingness to even talk at this time should show city council our sincerity towards negotiations. If you or any of your colleagues have questions or concerns, please contact me." I should, and that is again from the President of the FOP, Paul Hellring. And I should also mention that in talking with the mayor, they have also been conducting discussions with the fire union as well. Because they are basically contract negotiations, sort of by law, the nature of those negotiations are private and not divulged, hopefully, we will see some resolution to at least some of the issues that we need prior to the budget and hopefully prior to the end of the fiscal year. But negotiations and discussions are ongoing, and hopefully, as I said, resolution to some of the issues. We also received, 3G this evening was a recommendation from the Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission, and I also, we also received a letter from the City Planning Commission, both recommending the adoption of the SAPA Comprehensive Plan, which will be, as I stated before, which will be on the agenda next week, and a public hearing at 5:30 next week concerning SAPA. So the, basically, the go-ahead from both planning commissions for the adoption of the SAPA plan, but that will be discussed next week. Also, the last thing, end of the year schedule for council. We expect that we will receive the budget in a timely manner. It is due November 15th. Council needs to vote on that by December 15th. With those dates in mind, it is, at this point in time, planned to have the last meeting of council on December 18th. And a letter was sent to the administration that all legislation, pertinent legislation should be sent to council in a timely manner so that it can be addressed by that final meeting date. It should also be noted that both Christmas and New Year's are on Thursday evenings, so it is likely that the last meeting would be December 18th, and then the next meeting of council would not be until January 8th. But we will discuss that and determine if that's the way in which we wish to proceed. And that's all.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 188-1994, an ordinance entitled "Establishing the Rate to Be Charged for the Use of Swimming Pools, Recreation Centers, Baseball Fields, and the Showmobile by Providing for an Increase in Fees by Increasing the Fee for Use of the Showmobile."
Oh, excuse me. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question, on the question, I do like the idea that Councilman Wexler brought forward of using the showmobile for advertising. The question that comes to mind is that I believe back in 2014, we contracted with the company to investigate market-based revenue opportunities. To this date, I don't know that any of us have knowledge of anything that they have done to bring that about. I think about, the only thing that I can think of is that there are some banners or flags downtown, but certainly, this might be something to bring to that, to that group, to that enterprise, to see if they can act on it as far as the showmobile is concerned. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 5414, sale of tax-delinquent property, more commonly known as corner of park and terrace, Scranton, Pennsylvania, tax map number is noted to Thomas J. Kane and Mary M. Kane, 95 Linwood Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, for the consideration of $1,000.
Recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance.
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 96, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Aris Engineering Group LTD to provide architect-engineer services for Phase 1 of a street lighting project within the downtown area of the city of Scranton to commence within seven days after the final execution of the contract and be completed within 30 days after commencement.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 97, 2014, appointment of Jack Loscom, 3115 Parallel Drives, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Loscom's effective date will be October 9, 2014. Mr. Loscom will be replaced, excuse me, will be replacing Dominic Giorgetti, who resigned effective August 28, 2014. Mr. Loscom's term will expire with the term of Mayor William L. Courtrite.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C. Second. On the question?
On the question, last week I voted no, I'll be voting no tonight, for the reason that Mr. Loscom is involved in litigation with the city, and I don't think it's proper to appoint him to the commission, although I think he will do a great job, and I wish him the best of luck.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. That's the end of the legislation, and once again, I too would like to thank President Mark Volk, Lackawanna College, for extending us the courtesy of holding meetings here. The four weeks have been very pleasant, and accommodations have been terrific, and also theater manager Jim Cullen has been more than gracious in preparing the theater for us so that these meetings could be held and held in an orderly and effective manner. So thank you to both. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.